Having appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the committee to hold to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderwoman Purchase. Alderwoman Desenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Downlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chair McCormick is present.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move to the front of the agenda, Agenda Item Number 2023-040.
It's moved in second to move that item to the front of the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Yes, I did.
What I would like to do, though, is first get the Treasury report over with if we could.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll go right into it.
Thank you.
So I would accept a motion for the approval of the January 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. You guys are fast tonight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Madam Treasurer, is there a Treasury report?
Yes, Chair Williams, thank you very much. The corporate fund in the month of January had a beginning balance of $63,333,890. We took in total receipts of $10,652,586. We had total disbursements in the month of January of $9,821,162, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $64,164,513. Chair Williams, of that ending balance, your ARPA fund balance was $22,929,278. That concludes my report, Chair Williams.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, I mean Treasurer.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Let the record reflect that Alderman Purchase has joined the meeting.
Sure. I appreciate you. Welcome. We've already voted to move 040 to the front. So, Mr. Clerk, would you read it?
2023-040, An Ordinance Authorizing Execution of Redevelopment Agreement with HNN Properties LLC for Financial Assistance for the Property Located at 618-622 East Washington Street, Utilizing Central Area Tax Increment Finance Funds through the Office of Planning and Economic Development for an Amount Not to Exceed $600,000.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any discussion or anybody here to speak on it? Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon.
Sure. If you say your name and then go from there.
Absolutely. My name's Don Carley. I'm a proud member of Ward One. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I wanted to take a few moments. Again, my name's Don Carley. I'm with Horace Mann. I'm the General Counsel of the company, and I also manage our facilities. And I wanted to talk with the council today about a project we're excited to undertake in my role as Head of Facilities. See if I can move it forward. Could you advance it?
There we go.
There we go. Thank you. I wanted to first talk about what we're requesting. We're here today to talk about our request for a TIF application, and it's to remove two buildings, one located at 622 East Washington and the other at 618 East Washington. On the screen is a picture of the buildings. We're seeking TIF funds in order to assist us to remove these buildings. The buildings, as you can see, have been vacant for over a decade. They contain extensive mold. And 618 in particular has extensive asbestos remediation work that needs to be completed, and the preliminary cost just for the asbestos removal is over $200,000. You can also see at 618, there's a meteor-sized hole in the roof which has caused extensive water damage. The buildings are vacant. They're currently hindered development in the neighborhood. And the cost we estimate to abate, demolish, and remove the buildings, as well as to landscape and pave the space, is approximately $1.9 million. We are requesting $600,000 of TIF funds, which will be paid, our request is to have that paid over six years, $100,000 a year. We understand it's a substantial amount of money. Horace Mann has, we'll talk about in a second, invested a substantial amount in what we're calling our Washington Street Project and also on our corporate campus. Since 1997, Horace Mann has contributed more than $5 million to the TIF fund. We go to the next slide. I wanted to talk briefly with the council about our Washington Street Project. I'll talk a little bit about work at the campus and then give some more details on the project we're proposing for the TIF fund. This is a picture of a building that we purchased about a year and a half ago on 7th and Washington. As you can see, we've made a dramatic renovation to the building. The company has spent meaningfully over $1 million on renovating this building. The purpose of the renovation, which is really an extension of our campus, is to create a wonderful Horace Mann agency, the Katie Hagaman Agency on the first floor, and then there'll be corporate residences on the second and third floor. This project was done completely with private funds, and none of the TIF requests relates to any work on this building. The purpose for the building, as the council may know, over the last four or five years, Horace Mann has acquired three different companies, one in New Jersey, one in Texas, and a year ago, one in Madison, Wisconsin. This corporate residence will allow our executives from those companies and employees to come visit us here in Springfield. We think that'll be a great amenity to our office and help really showcase all Springfield has to offer for our out-of-town employees. Also, I joined Horace Mann seven years ago, and one of the benefits will be for individuals like me that are moving to Horace Mann and moving to Springfield. It'll be a great temporary housing for them as they transition their home and their families to Springfield. So we're excited about this project. We could go to the next slide. I wanted just to quickly highlight that, you know, Horace Mann was founded, as many of you know, in 1945 here in Springfield by two educators. Our downtown headquarters has been here in Springfield the whole time. Our current headquarters has, you know, recently celebrated its 50th anniversary, and the company has been highly committed to downtown. We've made significant improvements, again, without TIF funds on our own dime to our corporate headquarters that might not be transparent. We did a significant solar panel project on our corporate headquarters, which was significant. We undertook a significant HBAC project, and we did all of our plumbing and restrooms. We replaced all of our windows. We took advantage of the COVID pandemic to really accelerate those capital improvements while many of our employees were at home. Now they're back. They have a wonderful facility to come back to. And as many of you have driven by our campus, we're redoing kind of the iconic pond and making it a more natural ecosystem and fountain, which I think will be just really a showpiece for downtown. So we're excited about all of that work. I also want to stress that, you know, Horace Mann really uses its campus to support the community. We work closely with BOS and the city on a lot of events downtown to give access to our facilities and make them go well. And I also want to mention, you know, the company is a tremendous supporter apropos for our discussion today of the Springfield Sagamon Growth Alliance and Downtown Springfield, Inc., and the Horace Mann is also committed to the creation of the downtown master plan. We could go to the next slide. I wanted to show you, if you recall the prior slide of the buildings, this is the vision and the architectural diagram of what we intend to do with those spaces. As you can see, there'll be a lot of landscape, a lot of open space. I want to stress that we don't view this as a parking project. It's a beautification project and really an opportunity to take two vacant buildings that are an ongoing challenge and hazard to the local community and really beautify. We think with this work and the Washington Street Project, that whole block, it'll be, I think, a wonderful amenity to downtown for visitors, pedestrians. Obviously, there's a lot of local fairs, and there's some certainly wonderful restaurants and bars that are continuing to grow, and I think they'll be a great amenity for them. And of course, we view this really as an extension of our main campus. I want to highlight, and I've been asked some questions about the cost. It's not a simple teardown of the buildings. There's meaningful structural issues. We talked about some of the abatement, asbestos and mold issues which are a challenge. And there's also some of shared walls, some adjoining walkways, some utilities that need to be moved. So it's a fairly significant project from an architectural engineering perspective, which is how we get to that figure. Next slide, please. This is a more detailed description of what the parking will look like. You can see on the right hand, there's about 22 spots with the green space. We're working with the city to make sure that there's ample space for evening and weekend parking, which we'll offer free in this spot. And we're working with the city on the final details. And we also hope to have some spaces available for lease on a 24/7 basis to really support the local business owners, the community. There's some apartments in the area. It'll be a great amenity to have 24/7 for those individuals. I think in conclusion, go to the last slide if we may. Just want to highlight that this isn't a parking project. It's a beautification project. We've talked about that. Horace Mann and our employees take enormous pride in our facilities, the work we've done. I think it's a source of joy for not only the employees but for the community. And we view this project as really an extension of our campus and work. And we're very excited about it. We're tremendously appreciative of the support we've gotten from the local community. We've talked to some of the local businesses, and they're very excited about the work and appreciates our port. And I appreciate your time this evening.
Okay, thank you for that. Is any discussion? Or does anybody want to make most?
Chair, I just, if I could, not to interrupt. I'm getting a message that there's no sound on Channel 18.
No, there is. I just checked with Julia. There is sound on Channel 18.
Okay.
And there is on live streaming.
Okay.
It's the website that they're working on right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
But there is this sound. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to send this on to consent now anymore discussion. Hear none? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look at Matt. I'll clap with you.
The master plan presentation. We have a second presentation. Come on up. Say your name and do your thing.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. Mr. Mayor, Alderwomen and men, thank good to be here this evening. My name is John Stremssterfer. I'm the President and CEO of the Community Foundation for the Land of Lincoln, and I am here representing a coalition of organizations, including the City of Springfield, that have banded together to sponsor a downtown Springfield and Mid Illinois Medical District master planning process, along with the Community Foundation of the City, the Springfield Sagamon Growth Alliance, Downtown Springfield Incorporated, and the Mid Illinois Medical District are all the coalition partners for this. And also, we just heard from folks from Horace Mann who are also helping fund a portion of the planning process. This idea for a master plan was born out of the Next 10 Project that the Community Foundation initiated in 2020, kind of at the height of social distancing and the pandemic. We were looking for a way to have hopeful projects for the future as we all come out of COVID-19. And among all of the ideas submitted, I would say the downtown district was commented on the most. People love the downtown, whether they're from the city of Springfield or the outerlying areas. It's a real centerpiece for not only central Illinois but the entire state. So with that, the number one priority of the Next 10 was to have a revitalized and resilient downtown. Among that, in that notion, was to strengthen the connection between the downtown and the medical district. So through a volunteer committee organized by the coalition partners, consulting group Houzil Levine was chosen as the lead consultant to walk our community through this planning process. Tonight, Nick Davis with Houzil Levine is here to give a progress report on the project thus far. Before I have Nick come up to the podium, I just want to say how much I appreciate the city council's consideration of this plan once it's completed, because it's truly the implementation that will matter the most. And you, I would suggest, have more responsibility for the success or failure of the plan as any other citizens in this community. So with that, I'd like to introduce Nick Davis to come up to the podium.
Just going to jump ahead a little bit. So real quick, first of all, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present today. We have a team of four that was selected for this project. So I'm the lead on behalf of our team from Houzil Levine. My name is Nick Davis. I'm a principal with the firm. I've been with them for over 10 years. I specialize in mostly doing the urban design-focused projects, implementation-driven projects, which is exactly what this downtown plan, the master plan needs to be, in the Mid Illinois District, master plan needs to be. So with us, we have Site, CMT and Johnson Consulting. Site is a landscape architecture and architecture firm. They specialize in urban design, urban realm. They'll be working with us on the public side, you know, what could happen in the right of way, what can happen in some of the parts and open space areas. We also have CMT, and today with us, from CMT is Jeff Large. His team is working on the transportation component. And then the last group is Johnson Consulting. You may recognize the name. They're working on the Fairgrounds project right now. They're helping us with the market study, which is going to be an important component to both our existing conditions, but also helping us prepare the recommendations for the plan, make sure that they're reasonable, fiscally sound, that they're in line with what our expectations should be. So that's the team of four that was selected for this project that we put together. Just real quick, an overview of who we are, Houzil Levine. We're a planning, design, and geospatial firm. What we do and what we specialize in is planning. We do comprehensive plans, downtown plans, corridor studies, redevelopment studies, but all very much in the planning realm. So that's why we brought on these other partners. There's aspects in the downtown that are important that we need to consider, and we needed other specialists. So that's why we put this team together. We've conducted over 450 planning studies across the country. You know, we're based here in Illinois, but we work all across the nation. And with that, we are able to bring a lot of experience, best practices, you know, what's working really well in Colorado, what's working really well in the Raleigh-Durham area, maybe what some pitfalls are. So being able to bring that experience is something that we think is an added benefit. Then the last aspect of our company, we're innovative, we're fun, we think we're fun. A lot of our clients, if you talk to them, will tell you that, you know, they enjoy working with us because we get really excited about this. We love planning. It's what we do. This is that kind of perfect nexus of, you know, high-level policy, which is what this master plan needs to address, but also implementation, which John already touched on, a lot of what you talked about in your Next 10 Plan is implementation. That's where we're, you know, kind of the rubber meets the road type of an approach, and that's where we're at with the master plan. So we're just at kind of a starting point with existing conditions. We're still doing our homework. And so today, we just wanted to give an overview of where we're at in the process and, you know, what to expect coming down the line. So just as an overview, why do we do master plans? What's the purpose of a downtown study? Or, you know, as we incorporate the Mid Illinois Medical District into this, how do we bring those two areas together? We want to set a community vision for the future of the downtown Springfield area and for the Mid Illinois Medical District. We want to establish an expectation for future investment. That's very important. It's probably one of the critical aspects of a downtown plan is to clearly articulate what you're trying to accomplish, and then it provides that decision-making framework, which, again, John sort of touched on, is we put all of these policies in place that reflect the vision of the community. So this isn't my plan. This isn't my team's plan. Our job is to thread in all of the different input points that we're going to receive through the course of this project into a plan that the community wants. And then you can have this as a decision-making framework, a document that points to what you're trying to accomplish. Developers, investors, property owners have a clear understanding of what you're trying to do. That's an important aspect of why we do these types of plans. The boundary area, and I know this might be a little difficult to digest, and I think we're going to share these materials, you know, moving forward or after this presentation. But the boundary area incorporates the downtown to the south, the Mid Illinois Medical District to the north, at least primarily where the medical institutions are currently built out and some commercial components. There are some neighborhoods to the north that are contextual areas, so we'll be looking at those, but we're not really planning into that area. The black boundary line is very much what we'll be studying. Later on in the presentation, we have some links to the project website. That'll have this map on there as well, so you can look at this in more detail if you have any questions. The planning process was broken up into six steps. We're currently in these first three steps. So we've done the project initiation. We've started the public engagement, but we still have some public events that are coming up. And we're in that study area analysis, our existing conditions assessment. That's not complete either. We're really in a kind of a draft set. We're going through some internal QAQC coordinating with our subconsultants. But there's a couple of things we wanted to show today just to give you a sense of what we're looking at and the types of issues that we'll be addressing. The project timeline. So this is broken out, you know, putting us kind of right here in the middle. In February, we're having this presentation today. The project website's going to get launched tomorrow. I'll talk a little bit more about that, and that's something that we're going to share with the public, so everybody's going to be able to participate with some online questionnaires. There's some online mapping tools. And then the existing conditions report, at least from our kind of internal homework side, is going to come together in March. So that's something, again, that'll be published on the project website. Everybody's going to have an opportunity to see what our initial findings are and really what's going to drive many of the recommendations in the plan to come. And then looking down the line, so when we get into steps four, five, and six, those will start to come together, some of the visioning workshops, discussions we're hoping to have in March or April. We'll prepare the visioning goals. We'll prepare the draft plans and those frameworks and deliver those in both the project website but also in discussions with our coalition leads, as well as probably coming back here to meet with you, I'm guessing, in April, when we'll have some materials to present and discuss and get your feedback on. And then come August and September is when we'll really move into the final plan coming together and hopefully going through the adoption process. Real quick, I just want to go over the preliminary existing conditions. So again, this is all draft, but we've gone through, we've done a detailed existing conditions analysis. So, you know, we've walked every block. We've experienced as much as we can, both walking it, driving it. A lot of this is pulled from data that we were able to compile from many different resources. Some of this we had to field check ourselves. So this is just the existing land use map as an example. We're starting to compile a 3D model of the downtown, some from sources that are already available. Some of this we had to generate. What we're hoping to use this for is to start to bisect these buildings, break them down by floor, and identify what the uses are. So what's the use in the ground floor? What's the use in the upper floors? Where we're not sure, that stuff that we want to flag, that's an important aspect of what the plan's recommendations want to address. But just so you can get a sense of what the scale is, and I know you live here and you see it, but this is a lot of area to cover, a lot of area to provide recommendations for. So as part of our upcoming steps, we'll be breaking down the master plan area into a series of functional subareas. So that's to be identified in the existing conditions. We've looked at aspects like the ground floor residential lane uses, ground floor commercial uses. So we're starting to map this context, so we have a better understanding of where some of your challenges might be. We have ground floor vacancies, which has been identified both from data that existed but also field verified, working with DSI, working with the Growth Alliance. We've identified upper floor vacancy. That one's a little trickier. I mean, we're not able to go into every building. So as part of the plan's recommendations, that would be something we would say that you might want to look into is an upper floor vacancy inventory. Upper floor uses, also something that's interesting to look at when we start talking about mixed use, very appropriate in a downtown. So mixed use being typically commercial and service on the ground floor, residential above. In a downtown, though, you'll see mixes. That's not always the case. And then a wide range of building heights here in the downtown. So again, just something to consider as we start to, you know, talk about view sheds, talk about the way that people are moving through the downtown and what that looks like. Two maps that I find very interesting, you know, every time we do downtown plans, there's something about them that are a little different. The blue are parking lots, surface parking areas. So I'm sure, you know, as you're driving around, these are something that you see as you're moving through the space, but that's starting to eliminate the street wall. That becomes very challenging. So those aren't building footprints. Those are parking lot footprints. It was just something that we'll have to address as we start moving forward with the plan. The other one, somewhat unique to Springfield, is the non-taxable lands. And so this is something that as we start to think about plan recommendations and implementation, not having the tax dollars necessary sometimes to fund those projects are a big aspect or a big challenge that you might be facing. So I think looking at this and thinking about these different areas is a consideration that we'll be certainly trying to learn more about as we move into the actual plan itself. All right, last bit. So getting involved. This is, as I mentioned, the online engagement is going to go live tomorrow. This will be the project website. It's queued up and ready to go. On there is going to be online questionnaires, so you'll be able to learn more about the plan. A lot of what I talked about today is going to be available on the website. You'll learn about the plan. You'll see the study area. You'll have a way of connecting with us if you have any questions. There's the downtown Springfield questionnaire. There's also a Mid Illinois Medical District questionnaire. You can take both, so we're not limiting people. And there's also Map.Social. It's an online mapping tool. It's very easy to use. You're able to drop comments or draw, you know, areas where you might want to see a park or an area where you think a road is dangerous or an intersection that you've had a problem with, whatever it might be. You're able to provide that feedback in this platform, and it becomes data for us that we can analyze. So it's very helpful. So again, this is going to start getting promoted through the Growth Alliance as well as Downtown Springfield, Inc. We're going to push this out in as many different platforms as we can. When you see these links, do us a favor. Please help us push those out. Tell your neighbors, tell your friends, tell everybody. We want to get as many people involved as we can. And then down the line, we have a visioning workshop. We're hoping to get a real big group for that as well. So more to come on that. So with that, this is what the project website will look like. These are what the questionnaires will look like. Pretty straightforward in terms of process. Time-wise, they're about 10 to 15 minutes, so it's not a big ask. And we look forward to starting to collect this information when it comes in. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ryan. He's going to walk us through how we're going to implement this plan once it's completed.
Thank you, Nick. The implementation of the master plan is very, very important, obviously. The best way to get the best plan is for everyone to encourage their constituents to provide public input into the plan, and we hope that you'll be able to assist us with that. After the plan's complete, we will be asking the city council to officially adopt the plan. That's very, very important. Planning like this is unbelievably important for future economic development of any community. A lot of times, people wonder about planning, you know, do we do too much planning? Without a plan, you don't know what success looks like. And absent a plan like this, we have a difficult time shopping the community out to developers that might be outside the community, because without a plan, we can't go to them and say, hey, look, the community came together. They all provided input, and they've all decided these are the things they'd like to see in these places. It helps them make investment. They know what might end up next door, down the street from them. It helps you hopefully reduce uncomfortable zoning hearings that happen from time to time because you have a plan. And you can say, look, this plan was put together. This will help us greatly in our work in developing downtown in the medical district. We are already getting a lot of interest in the medical district. With the railway location happening, the Third Street corridor being improved for a multi-use path and recreation area, this is a transformative time in Springfield, in downtown Springfield, and in the Mid Illinois Medical District. This plan, I believe, will help us tee that up and move it forward in a great way. And so we're very excited about it. We appreciate the support of the city, and we hope to bring you a plan that's so darn good, you'll be excited about adopting it and making it the official plan. Well, thank you for your time tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? Well, we thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have ordinances remaining in committee. Any action anybody want to take? Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't push my button.
No problem.
Zero, I believe we're ready to pull out 2023-008.
Second.
And then, Chair, if we could, I've been asked, there's another one, zero, was it 049, I believe? 049, that they would like to talk next because same, it's basically the same people.
Okay.
They could do that.
Is it the same subject matter?
So this one would be come out to, I guess, for consent.
Okay. So we'll start with the one that you want to move out of committee first.
2023-008.
Okay, and it's been moved in second. Did somebody second?
Seconded to come out.
To come out, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now that it's out.
Move for consent.
So it's been properly moved in second to put this on consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to deal with, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, he's got to read it.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's right. My fault.
2023-008. An ordinance amending chapters 170, 172, and 94 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code ordinances as amended, adopting updated international codes and fire safety codes for the Office of Public Works.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now for discussion, we're going to go to Alderman Redpath, and then we'll go to Alderman McMenamin.
I was going, I got another ordinance I want to bring out.
Oh, okay, sure. Well, are we finished with this one?
Well, unless Alderman McMenamin.
Did you have something pertaining to this one?
No, I do not.
No, or a new one too? Okay, so let's close out this one.
Real, real quick, my understanding is, is everybody met, they, they came together, got an agreement, and so, so they're all good. Everybody's good with this, so it's ready to come out.
Okay.
Thanks. We did have an agreement. We did have a couple of minor amendments that need to be addressed, and if you, as long as you're voting on those, such as the removing the Knox box, home box from from it, as well as updating some of the 2012 to 2018 codes.
You want us to put it on debate, and you get us the amendments for next week?
We, I think we did send out the amendments, correct?
I've had so much stuff, I'm.
I haven't seen any amendments yet.
Yeah, I think that the easiest would be just put it on debate. That way we make sure we get everything.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved in second to change it to debate, and that'll give him time to do what we need to do.
Get us the amendments.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you had, now Alderman Redpath.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move 2023-008 off the, out of the committee and put it on the debate agenda.
That's what we just did.
I mean, seven.
Seven, okay, there you go. It's been properly moved in second.
Who seconded that, Mr. Chair? I have missed. Thank you.
Sure, okay.
For discussion.
Yo, any discussion? Go ahead.
I, I think the gentleman, he's a firefighter. He's here tonight to, I think he'd like to discuss it if that'd be acceptable.
Why don't we, why don't we wait till next week when everybody can? Because the CWLP has a presentation next week also.
So would it be all right to not put it on debate? Because I think he wants to work on some amendments that might be acceptable.
I made a motion for debate. We're going to bring it out. We're going to talk about it. We're going to vote on it.
Well, I guess I'll vote no then.
Well, did you want to hear from him, is what you're saying, tonight?
Yeah, I think he's here, and I think he'd just like to offer some ideas about his ordinance, which I guess, I guess he'll still get a chance, whether we put it on debate, hold it, or consent. So as long as he gets a chance to talk.
He has signed up to speak tonight.
Okay.
He can speak at the end. We don't need to speak on it now, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's, no, wait a minute.
Okay, I mean, as long as he's allowed to speak. So he's here tonight. He will be heard tonight.
And now's the appropriate time to let him talk because it's been put on debate.
Make your motion, Joe.
I think you made the motion to put it on debate.
I did. So I call a question.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was there, well, that's it, I guess. Any, no more action for those being held in committee? So your guy get to speak later in the meeting.
Was this, this has to be read in.
Yeah.
This still has to be read in since we brought it out, right?
Yes, it does. 2023-007. An ordinance amending chapter 96 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code ordinances as amended regarding chapter 96, Article 6, Safety Regulations by adding section 96.075 regarding motorized surfboards for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for debate.
Second.
Now it's been moved in second to go to debate. Any discussion?
I'd like to allow, unless Alderman want to go first, I'd like, I'd like to allow Mr. Matt Shear to offer his ideas if you've got some to to present.
We're going to hear from him next week, Joe.
Well, he signed up tonight, so let's just get it over with.
All right, then he won't speak next week.
Yeah.
I would just like to make myself available for any questions you have. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Is that okay? All right.
Sure, I've got one question for you.
Yes, come in. Yes, sir.
Thanks for being here tonight. Are you working on some amendments that will make this opportunity for motorized surfboards more safe and more reasonable on our lake in a way that Lake Decatur has allowed these surfboards to be used on Lake Decatur? And as I understand it, any, and I understand, Madam, you're not allowed to talk about this because you're with DNR, but as I understand it, DNR lakes that allow swimming are also allowing these surf, these motorized surfboards. So I'm sorry for the wrong question.
To address the first, yes, I am open to any amendments to how we might be able to work with anyone in this community to provide the service to whoever wants to do it. And yes, we are allowed, as far as I am told by the Boating Law Administrator for the Illinois Department Natural, Department of Natural Resources, any body of water that allows swimming, we are allowed to operate these on.
And would you be open minded to restricting the use of these surfboards to certain days, certain hours, certain areas in the lake?
Whatever might appease whoever is in charge, we would love to work with them.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight.
I'll take a seat unless there are other questions. I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Okay. All the, all the one in kindly, I'm sorry.
I was actually waiting for the next door. I thought we were almost done, so.
Okay.
Should I sit or should I stay?
Last question. Are you a firefighter on the Springfield Police, Fire Department?
I would prefer not to comment on that. I don't like to bring that into this whole thing, hopefully. I'm a citizen who has a business, and that's my approach here.
And you live in, in, you live in the city limits. Is that great?
Yes, sir, I do. I was born in Peoria, but I am, am raised in Springfield. This is my home.
Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Any more ordinances to come out or take action? Okay, and I'm confused. Did you need the floor for a minute?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I'd, I'd like to move that we bring 2023-049 up to the front of the agenda. I know we have some people here who are interested in that one, too.
Sure. It's been motion to move 049 to the front. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. They may come up and give their name and read the ordinance.
All right. 2023-049. An ordinance amending chapter 153, section 153.112 pertaining to site suitability, chapter 153, section 153.157 pertaining to street design, and chapter 155, section 155.106 pertaining to all drive-up service facilities of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended.
Move for consent.
Second. And I do believe I have a constituent here who is going to speak on this, or we could have, see, okay.
Are they here?
Well, I, I think Nate needs to come up.
All right, Nate's here, the constituent? Really? All right.
Nate's not my constituent, no. Someone else gets to.
He's mine.
But there is one floor amendment we would like. There was one, one minor typo in section 153, 112, 4B, 3A. It should be 20 feet and not 22 feet in that one section. I'll make that motion to amend.
Second.
So the motion is made as amended, same motion as amended. Any more discussion on it?
We have to vote on the amendment.
Yes, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And so this is, now we're going to do it as amended for consent.
So I would move that we take the ordinance as amended to the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. No more discussion. Just say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, people. Please.
Thank you, Chair.
Now we can get to CWLP, Mr. Clerk, I believe.
I'm going to start with ordinances tabled and remaining in committee. 2022-384, 2022-463, 2023-001. And now CWLP. 2023-015. An ordinance approving a one-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed $400,000 for contract number UE22-01-78, maintenance and repair of heavy equipment in Dahlman, Dahlman Power Plant Complex with Rowland Machinery Company for a total amount payable of $700,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
2023-016. An ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing the execution of contract UE23-11-84, Unit 4 SCR, top layer catalyst removal and installation with Haze Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $136,285 for the Electric Division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent, second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent agenda. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
2023-017. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a proposal with Serum USA Incorporated for a five-year term in an amount not to exceed $170,000 to provide catalyst management and testing services for Unit 4 SCR for the Electric Division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to the consent agenda. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
2023-018. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of usage data meters from Exar Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $402,469 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public Works. 2023-019. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW23-08-57 with Green Demolition Contractors Incorporated for demolition of 24 properties for the railroad relocation in an amount not to exceed $399,640 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to the consent agenda. Any concession, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
2023-020. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance and execution of grant number 0867-26 from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, USDA, Forest Service through the northern eastern area, state and private forestry, USFS, in an amount of $24,750 for funding for the tree planting program for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion?
I'm a present on this one.
I'm also a present.
All right, we have two presents.
Noted.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-021. An ordinance adopting the 2022 arterial roadway network plan pursuant to section 153.107 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended for the Office of Public Works.
Move to debate.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for this to go to debate and for discussion, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, Nate, I, and I've had so much come through our desk with, with budget and everything. Can you kind of explain what, what this is? And, and I, I haven't seen the map. I don't know if it's up here. But can you kind of explain what it is?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and share, share the map with you. But it's our arterial roadway network plan. It's the tool that is used for developers as well as for the land subdivision committee and the transportation study for planning for, for roads for the future, showing our, our major roads in the applicable right of way that will need to be conveyed. And per, per our code, we have to update it every four years. There's very minimal tweaks. I think that the one main one was actually, we just adjusted Lindbergh to reflect the new sports facility, and, and other than that, it's pretty, pretty minor changes.
Can you send the map out? I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this in any way. I just, I hadn't, I, you know, I haven't had a chance to really, I hadn't seen the map or anything, and I just appreciate that.
Yep, I will send that out.
Get it passed next week.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded for debate. No more discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-022. An ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,500,000 from unappropriated fund balance to accommodate FY23 land acquisitions associated with the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
2023-023. An ordinance authorizing condemnation of real property for the purpose of constructing usable segment 6 via of Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Been properly moved in second for consent. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Chairman. Nate, are, are there common property owners involved with our need to go to court to get?
No, there aren't common ones, but our goal is obviously to not go to condemnation. It just enables us. Our goal is to negotiate with them. You know, we, we obviously start out offering them at the fair market value, but, but our ultimate goal is not to go there. And there, there are various owners as part of this project.
What would you say is the, the fair market value of the largest, or highest priced property, if you know it?
I don't know it off the top of my head, and I don't want to guess, but.
Are these lower priced properties or higher priced?
There, there are quite a few residential properties along the, the south side of North Grand Avenue, and then there are a couple of commercial properties further to the, further to the east on the north side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To clarify, Mr. Chair, that's segment 6A of the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects.
No, okay. So the motion is to send this on to consent. If there's no more discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-024. An ordinance authorizing a contract with George L. Parnell Jr. and Era E. Parnell for the purchase of real estate located at 1310 East North Grand Avenue in the amount of $35,000, and closing costs in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $36,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project usable segment 6A for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Been properly moved in second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, say aye.
Aye.
2023-025. An ordinance authorizing a contract with George L. Parnell Jr. and Era E. Parnell for a purchase of real estate located at 1320 East North Grand Avenue in the amount of $39,700, and closing costs in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $41,200 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project usable segment 6A for the Office of Public Works.
Watch for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all say aye.
Aye.
2023-026. An ordinance authorizing a contract with James Goldsberry Jr. for the purchase of real estate located at 1130 East North Grand Avenue in an amount of $56,500, and closing costs in the amount of $2,000 for a total amount not to exceed $58,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects usable segment 6A for the Office of Public Works.
Watch for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I would ask that we do an omnibus vote for 2023-027 to 031.
Second.
Thank you. Oh, it's been motion to send this on as a consolidated bill. From what, what was the numbers again? 27 and 31?
27 to 31.
Yes.
So.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-027. A resolution for temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route 97, Jefferson Street from 9th Street to 5th Streets for the St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 11, 2023 for the Office of Public Works. 2023-028. Resolution requesting temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route 6th Street, 6th Streets from St. Joseph's to Adley Stevenson Drive for the Peacekeepers fundraiser on July 16, 2023 for the Office of Public Works. 2023-029. A resolution for temporary closure of the portion of Illinois State Route 97, Jefferson Street from 6th Street to 9th Streets for the Parallight Abe's Car Show cruise to be held on August 4, 2023 for the Office of Public Works. 2023-030. A resolution for temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route 97, Jefferson Street from 5th Street to 9th Streets for the annual Halloween parade to be held on October 28, 2023 for the Office of Public Works. 2023-031. A resolution for temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Routes 97, Jefferson Street from 5th Street to 9th Streets for the annual Christmas parade to be held on December 2, 2023 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this consolidated from 02, I mean, 22, 2023-027 all the way 2023-031 to the consent agenda. No more discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
General City Business. 2023-032. An ordinance approving the appointment of Brian Sylvester to the Springfield Convention and Visitors Advisory Board.
Move for debate.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to debate. Any discussion? Hearing none. Is Brian here? No? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
2023-033. An ordinance approving the appointment of Jessica Rubenkowski to the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees.
For debate.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to debate. Any discussion? And is, what's this? Is Jessica here? She's not okay? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-034. An ordinance to increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one for Bloom Springfield LLC doing business as Bloom Springfield for the business located at 2 South Grant, Old State Capitol Plaza.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They are here tonight, and I would like to allow them a moment to come up and speak.
Sure.
Hello, my name is Hannah. I'm one of the owners.
I'm one of the owners. My partners Caitlin and Brittany are with me tonight. We just wanted to come in front of you guys and say we are, first of all, grateful for the consideration. We're super excited about Bloom. And, you know, we all grew up in Springfield. So obviously, some of our best memories are here in Springfield, and we just really want to see the city thrive. And like somebody mentioned tonight, it's a really transformative time for downtown right now. You know, we're seeing a lot of businesses pop up, and it's just really growing. And we just kind of want to put our unique flair on that. So like I said, we're just super excited and grateful for your consideration tonight and look forward to, of course, hopefully seeing you guys there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. No more discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-035. An ordinance to increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one for JLN Enterprises LLC doing business as Little Corner Bar for the business located at 1601 Converse Avenue.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all say aye.
Aye.
2023-036. An ordinance to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one for Hibachi Madness North LLC doing business as Hibachi Madness located at 2811 North Dirksen Parkway.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all say aye.
Aye.
2023-037. An ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to nonrenewal of liquor license by Dew Chili Parlors of America LLC, Number 3, doing business as Dew Chili Parlors, Number 3, located at 2312 Walmash Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all say aye.
Aye.
2023-038. An ordinance authorizing payment to Burton Brown, a City of Springfield police officer, for settlement of workman's compensation claim for claim number 18-WC-019803.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-039. An ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for the 2023 planning services and authorizing payment in an amount not to exceed $200,000 January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to the consent agenda. Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
2023-041. An ordinance authorizing execution of contractors' contracts for fire protection services with Curran, Southside, Woodside, South Oak Knolls, South Lawn, Eastdale, Lake Springfield, Northside, and West Fire Protection Districts from February 28, 2023 through February 29, 2024.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send it to the consent agenda. Go ahead Reverend, I mean Reverend.
I'm sorry. She got to the button before I did.
Oh, yes, she did.
I did, yeah.
Oh, the woman kindly, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Chief, if you could, just some brief questions on this one. I know you're probably hoping to get through this meeting without questions, but that would be a tough nut to crack.
You are correct.
So just wondering, are we, are there any changes in rates that are being charged for our fire protection in this contract?
As far as I know, no. They all stayed the same. Linda O'Brien in the legal office actually handled all these. We've been, we've had some other stuff that we've been working on, and she took care of that for us.
And have there been a significant increase in calls to these areas? Or are we kind of staying the same in terms of amount of service we're delivering?
I don't think that it's, that there's more calls that I would consider outliers, but we can definitely run more. What we'd like to do is, and what we're in the middle of trying to establish are if there are significantly more medical calls in these areas. Because this is for fire protection.
Yes.
And there are, there are communities that also do stuff for EMS response as well, but we don't currently have that in place.
Okay, thank, well, that was my next question, so I want to make sure, thank you.
And maybe I can add just a little bit. You may recall that these are all, the amounts paid are set by statute. So we are at the maximum levy.
Okay.
And one of the things that the lobbyist is going to be working on is some kind of an adjustment that's allowed in the fire prediction, fire protection formula that relates either to calls or per capita persons being served. So the idea of doing the one year was to allow some opportunity to talk about a legislative fix, because these are maxed out, you know, based on the, what the statute allows.
Thank you, Mr. Circle.
Regardless of the number of calls, there could be 500 calls or one call, but they're maxed out.
Thank you.
Alderman-Handauer.
Thank you. Is Leland Grove part of this? They are?
Yes.
Here's, here's the problem I have with them, and they're not going to be happy about me saying this, but those dang speed bumps and what it does to our equipment. Because when you go over them, it's a lot, and a lot of times, they don't have them marked on the street, can't see them real well. And you hit those things, and I know hitting them in a pickup truck, what it feels like. I can't imagine going in a fire truck full of water. And if, you know, if we're going to do fire protection, then they're going to throw these here and there, and, you know, all it takes is one of our trucks to get broke because of it. And then, then we, we're the ones that have to pay for it. And I don't know what we're, what the max is here, but I want to make sure that that's addressed. And I realize we can't, we're maxing what we got, but if we hit one of those things and it damages our trucks, they should have to, they should have to pay for our truck. Because those things are, they're, you know, they're dangerous.
Agreed. That'll be something that, you know, we can bring up in the next round, which obviously is not going to be very far away before we're starting to negotiate for next year. So that is something, I agree with you, that I've had kind of on my checklist that we can put into that, but we didn't do it this time.
Well, and you know, the other part is, is it slows down our response time, because we've got to slow down to hit those things. And, you know, it's, to me, that's the most dangerous part of it, you know.
Emergency response, they make it less safe.
Right.
Quite frankly.
And just, I believe that is South Oak Knolls Fire Protection Districts.
Okay, thank you. I, yeah.
Okay, Alderman-McMinnan.
The problem is spreading. We've got the problem not only in Leland Grove, but in Jerome. They've got them not just on aisles, but on some of the side streets as well. So it's, their bumps, I think, are more severe than Leland Grove's bumps.
Really?
It's a real problem that's spreading.
At some point in time, we need to just say, look, if you're going to have them, we can't, we can't support you.
Or move into the city.
I'll second that.
Then they can't have them. I'm sorry. Anybody else for discussion? Been properly moved in second for consent. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-042. An ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, ICJIA, grant number 823106 in the amount of $270,000 for implementing violence prevention programs for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just real quick, no discussion. Chief, I would imagine you're going to give us a summary of what the, what the plan would be with this grant when you guys got it all together.
You have to take care of that now, or we're.
Sure.
This is yet another grant that we're fortunate enough to receive, and it's going to be applied towards our focus attorneys program. And again, we're kind of revamping that program to address younger youth in our community that maybe haven't necessarily made important life decision, altering decisions yet. So if we can get to those individuals and try and hook them up with mentorship and get them on the right path, hopefully keep them from, you know, getting in the violence.
Well, thank you. I think programs like this are very important to our community. You know, recently, within the last week, I've had a grandmother looking for mentors for her three grandkids and, you know, a young mom, just really trying to get some male figures around. I'm going to talk with them and stuff. So, you know, I appreciate things like this, and I look forward to your plan. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Motion's on consent. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-043. An ordinance authorizing a seven-year renewal of an agreement with Cersei Dynex to provide integrated services to Lincoln Library in an amount not to exceed $483,976.55 from March 1, 2023 through February 28, 2030.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So why are we doing a seven-year contract? What's, what's the reason?
So Cersei, let me get up here all the way. So Cersei Dynex is the integrated library system that does everything for us. There's a handful of them that specialize in libraries. We've been working with Cersei Dynex since 2004. If we were to change at this point, it would take about a year to redo the entire library change. We can lock in at seven years. It's in our existing budget, and all this does is provide the contract for what we pay every year going forward. If we lock in now with these seven years, there's not an increase for the first two years, and then the years two through five, there's just a 1.9 increase. Compared to shopping around, you're getting something like 2.7, 2.9 increase per year. So we're saving money by locking into this seven-year agreement. We've been doing it in five, and then two increases with an option of two. So locking in at the seven allows us to go forward. So we're basically just paying what we always pay continuing forward.
So point of information for Corporation Council is, when we get locked into a seven-year contract, is there a clause in there that allows us to get out if we have to, or if something comes up on this?
This is a, I believe, a bid item or an RFP item, so I will have to check that.
Please do.
So this is a sole source. I do want to do, we have a sole source justification that we work because it's so specific to what libraries do.
Still a seven-year contract.
Yeah, it is a seven-year contract, so we can.
So we'll check into that, please. Thank you.
Motion's on consent. Any more discussion?
Move it for debate until we can get the information.
Okay.
Sock it.
So it's been properly moved in second to change it to move it to debate. Any more discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-044. An ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with John Schaefer and Associates Incorporated for architectural services to prepare construction plans and bidding documents for the former UCP building located at 1130 North 16th Street for a total amount not to exceed $98,250 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-045. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number CS-23-06-41 with Airmark Uniform and Career Apparel LLC for linen and uniform rental services for a three-year period from October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2025 for a total contract amount not to exceed $240,633.85 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-046. Annual appropriation ordinance of the City of Springfield, Illinois for this fiscal year beginning March 1, 2023 and ending February 29, 2024.
Move for debate.
Second. Been properly moved in second to send this to the debate agenda. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2023-048. An ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $2,115,158 to cover additional salary costs in FY23 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to the consent agenda. Any discussion? Alderman-Donlan.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I want to speak on the next ordinance. I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
Trying to raise Handauer. He's trying to raise. Go ahead.
Chief, I understand that we actually got some good news budgetarily that since we put the new crew on, that our overtime's actually decreased significantly this past month. Now, I'm knocking on wood that it continues that way.
Well, we didn't have, we haven't had any retirements in the last few months, and this isn't a big time of year for people to take vacations. So yes, we've, we've, there's, we have minimal overtime right now. I expect that to go up though in spring.
So you're setting us up to fail then, here.
I am, I am trying to be realistic.
Okay. Well, at least we got good news for this month. That's, that's always good.
Yeah, thank you.
Take your win and run with it.
Yeah, run, run.
Take them as you get them, chief.
Okay, the motion was for consent. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I can, I got a point of parliamentary procedure about the next ordinance. I don't know if it's proper, Mr. Clerk, to read it first or for me to ask my question first, since it's a point of parliamentary procedure.
Corporate counsel.
I would say, if you'd want to make your point of procedure first.
Yeah, Mr. Circle, I just want to make sure I understand what I think I already do, but it's related to when we review minutes and recordings of closed sessions and are considering releasing those, it means that they are, we see as a council, there's no longer a need to keep those confidential. And my question is, my understanding is that we really shouldn't talk about the specifics of what was discussed in the minutes until they are released. Is that correct?
The, without, I would say, without question, specifics should be, with the best practice is not to do that, without question. Talking about specific items. I mean, like comments and things of that.
Right, like getting into what was said and what wasn't said during the, during that specific conversation. Okay, then I'll hold any further comments that I had until after we adopt this, assuming that we will. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Okay.
2023-050. A resolution authorizing the release of the minutes and audio recording of the November 2, 2021 executive session of the Springfield City Council.
Move to consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this on to the consent agenda. Any more discussion? Been properly moved in second to send this on to the consent agenda. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk.
You are on unfinished business now, sir.
Unfinished business, yeah. Is there any unfinished? Anybody? Oh, I'm sorry. Purchase. Alderman Purchase.
I just want to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Saint Valentine's Day.
You guys are all my Palentine.
That's right.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Zirkel, have you had a chance to look into our small convenience store rules and regulations? I just wanted.
Since I'd actually asked one person to pull all that, but I don't know that I've gotten it back yet.
Okay.
I'll make sure we have it before the meeting.
Okay, and I just wanted to.
I think that we've got a, I believe there's a specific list of who's gotten the permits or licenses, but I don't know the exact status.
Okay.
Yep.
And my, my, my last question is, is have we, we looked into or have we talked with, with other council members about when, when we think we will do our variance to our cannabis laws to allow people to. The reason why I ask that because, you know, there's whole application process out right now. This is going to be finished, I think, at the end of February, so we're going to have another five or six people that's going to win licenses at the end of this year and we'll be back at this. So, you know, I think it's proper for us to at least, I'm not advocating to change any setbacks or anything. I think that's going to be studied by the state, but I am advocating for us to allow variances for people to at least. Do that to us.
If there is a, if the process, we, excuse me, slight sore throat. What I was going to say is that the process is we have to do a resolution that's referred because it is an amendment to the zoning code. So if there's a formal request, if you would like us to go ahead and put together the resolution for that, with that language, it goes first to the council, you then refer it, you know, through the process and then it comes back. So if there's a, if there's a request that we go ahead and prepare that, we'll have that by next Friday.
Well, if we could, I would like that request and hear everybody and, you know, we can chat about it and, you know, go from there.
Thank you. Then the council would have the option to whether or not to send it on or if you send it on, then you would have a final say on whatever the recommendation is, you know, from, back from the planning commissioner.
So it still have C P U, all of that things, so it still have to be approved by council?
Correct.
We're just giving them the option to go before us on it.
Correct. Thank you. Yes.
Any more unfinished business? I'm sorry, Alderman McMenamin and Dan Alderman, Alderman Conley.
I just got a very general comment and I agree with our city attorney that the normal practice is to not discuss or comment upon what takes place in closed executive session. But there are always exceptions to everything.
Well, there isn't.
And so, for example, in my opinion, an exception would be if we discuss something back there and then an alderman writes a letter to the editor of a widely-read newspaper and says that we've never, this city council has never discussed something that took place back there. I think it's appropriate to set the record straight because we should not misrepresent to the public what we have talked about. So that's just a general comment.
Okay. Alderman Conley.
You know, I have a new topic and I believe possibly Alderman Hanauer would like to respond, so I'll.
Okay, we'll come back to you then.
I'll come back, thank you.
Okay.
You know, I think it's great that in the land of the Alderman Award VII, he feels he can alter the rules whenever he sees fit. The rules are there because of the rules. You sat here last week and talked about things that we talked about in there. Now, I don't care if what happens, who does what, it's a free country, anyone can do a letter. By the way, it wasn't a letter to the editor, it was a, it was a post online. And it doesn't give you the right to break rules just because you think that that is.
This is a personal attack.
I got the floor, Joe.
That's a personal attack.
You're going to, you're going to get your turn.
You don't have the right to decide and we'll let the inspector general decide. That's what he's for. And quite frankly, you, you do this all the time. If the rules are good for you, you're for them. If they're not good for you, they're not for them. You're not for them. So the fact of the matter is, the rules are the rules. If we discuss something, it should not be discussed, period. Because otherwise, then we might as well forget going in there. We should do everything out here. Because if you're just going to come back out and spill the beans, what's the purpose? That's my point.
Okay, thank you. Now it's your turn, Alderman McMenamin.
In my 12 years on the city council, I've never seen an alderman tell the public that we did not discuss something back there in that room that we in fact did discuss and that the alderman that says we never discussed it is one of the aldermen that actually discussed it. So it's just called being honest, it's just called being honest with the public. And I'm trying to be honest with the public. I don't know what you're trying to be. And as far as violating rules, what kind of rules are you talking about? I think, you know, I follow the rules and now you're. And by the way, where's that rule? Let me explain something, Mr. Hanauer. The rule we have back there about not talking about back there is a good faith expectation. There's no rule that I'm aware of in our city code that says you cannot speak about something that happens back there, but the way we honor it is because we want to encourage our mayor to bring us back there on important matters. And if we run our mouths about what happens back there, the mayor will say, you know, I'm not going to do that because I can't trust the city council. So in my opinion, I'm not going to let anyone around here get smeared by misrepresenting what took place back there by going public. And, you know, I don't, our treasurer doesn't go back there with us. So maybe she didn't know what we were talking about unless someone here kind of clued her in. I don't know that.
Why are you even bringing it up?
Come on, guys, come on, come on. One at a time. Everybody, everybody's important. Everybody's going to be her Alderman Redpath. Just put your light on and you'll get your turn, but we're not going to do this. So finish up Alderman McMenamin and Dan Nix. It goes back to Alderman Hanauer.
I know I'm kind of outnumbered here by some of the loud talkers, but, you know, and I know some of them are sensitive because, you know, I understand Alderman Redpath, you've got a daughter running for higher office.
Now, why you got to bring that stuff up?
Politics, is it?
That's completely out of order.
Okay, so.
No, it's time for you to shut up, Joe.
Come on, guys.
Always do this stuff.
So I just wanted to encourage you to speak that way again, Ralph and.
Ralph?
And Chuck.
Are you finished?
Again, I think that we should not mislead the public about what we have talked about. That's the, that's just a basic point. I think we as elected officials should be honest. And I still, you know, so I think what I understand is, if you want to get, let's not talk about the specifics of what took place back there.
Why, you already did.
And so, please Nick, don't interrupt. So you posted your, you posted comments and said, we've never discussed about X, X, Y, and Z subject. You did that on February 3. And so then you go and listen to the tape on February 5, Monday, February 5, and you know what we discussed, you know what you said, and then we have a city council meeting here the next day and it seemed like the honest, honorable thing to do would be to say, hey, I forgot what we had talked about and that's why I wrote my letter to the editor. So that's my opinion. That would have been the honest, honorable thing to do, to say, hey, I forgot we had talked about it for 10 minutes and that's why I wrote my letter saying that we didn't talk about it, period.
Okay, thank you, sir. So Alderman Conley, I'm going to give you a choice. Do you want to go now?
You know what, I'm going to go ahead and wait until we get to a new topic.
Okay, you'll be first on the new topic. So Alderman Hanauer.
Okay, I want to address my, my comments to the Illinois Times and I'm going to let, I'm going to be straight up with it. We did not, when I said we did not discuss things, I meant we did not discuss things out here for the public to see. Number one. Because I'm not talking about what we're talking, what we, what we're doing back there. And we still, up until last week, we have not discussed anything about debt forgiveness, period. Not one thing, not out here. What we do back there, that's fine. That's informational only. It was said three times in the meeting, three times, informational only. But we did not come back out here. We've never had anything come back out here. We've never voted on anything out here. That was my point. Now, you can say what you want, but I have never discussed anything regarding the debt forgiveness out here in front of the public, which is what we are required to do to, to, to vote on things in front of the public. So people keep saying, oh, you said that. I'm saying I meant out here. Now, you can read in what you want, you can do what you want, you're going to say what you want to say. But I'm going to tell you, we, you tell me when we voted on anything that regarded debt forgiveness because I can tell you it never happened. We haven't seen contracts, we haven't even discussed it out here. And for you to tell me, you, you want to say that I'm a liar? That's your word.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to respond.
Let's move on.
Okay, so Alderman DeSento's Nix and then Alderman Redpath.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what I said last week. We are now 52 days away from an election and we don't need to be discussing it every week here. Don't need to. Don't need to point out who's running, who the candidates are. I think everyone around this horseshoe and everyone out there who's paying attention to this knows. So for anyone to come up here and name, start naming names and pointing fingers, I think it's ridiculous. I think it's disrespectful to the general public. I think it's inappropriate to talk about campaign issues around this horseshoe, so let's knock it off. Said it last week, I'll probably have to say it again next week.
Alderman Redpath.
Well said, Alderman DeSento. You hit it right on the head. He always, he constantly has to bring up stuff that has no place in the city council. Never follows the rules, always bucks the rules, and that's just ridiculous. So thank you for saying that. That's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yeah, so what you wrote, since you were discussing what you meant or what you wrote, what you wrote was there was never discussion anywhere, anywhere about forgiving any debt. So I think the public would read that, there was no discussion anywhere. They think, oh, it wasn't on the floor.
So I'm going to win my election, you can knock that off.
And so you can say what you meant.
Again, put the button on.
You can say what you meant, but I'm just saying what the public reads is important to anyone who sits around here. And if, if we want to ignore what is read out there by the public, whether it be 5,000 readers or 2,000 readers, you know, some others might not feel an obligation to correct the record. But I, I think it's important that we be honest with the public. And so I think the plain reading of your language, Mr. Hanauer, was that you said there was no discussion anywhere. You used the word anywhere, period.
That's a personal attack and you can stop that too.
Well, if you want to say reading your language is a personal attack, that's kind of a strange position to take.
Alderman Gregory.
I just want to say, I think, you know, after we, we just voted for the tapes to come out and after that, you know, I would love to work on a solution since, you know, we, we have a problem. I think the mayor said he doesn't have a problem with some of the solutions that's thrown out as far as CW, the CWLP debts and if we're going to waive them. So, you know, after this is all done, let's think about the solution and then be done with it. People are going to think what they're going to think. I don't even care. I just want to get past it to the next point and that's fixing this so we not have this conversation no more. It is what it is. He going to say he didn't? Joe, I get it, I feel you. It don't even matter at this point. People outside, they don't care about this dumb stuff. I'm telling you this. They are laughing at us because we up there arguing. He say, he ain't say it. I get the point that you trying to make. I don't care. The general public don't care. Get a fix. We all smart. Well, there's a bunch of degrees up here. Put an ordinance on the table, fix it and let's move on. What you say? Call the question?
There is none to call.
We're not voting.
Oh, that's good.
Alderman Conley. On a new subject.
On a new subject. Thank you, Chair. Since we're talking about resolutions, Mr. Zirkel, I did ask for a resolution for the Heartland Continuum of Cares overall plan to be introduced. If we could please have that so it can be included for Friday.
Yes, I, I think I'd given you a draft and I wasn't sure if you, what changes or maybe.
Nope, nope. I apologize, that was probably miscommunication, but this, this is on Sean because he triggered my memory and so. Yes, if we could have, if I'm good then.
With what I'd given you is fine?
Yes.
Okay, because it can always be modified if you need to.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I hope it be fast tonight.
Okay, so Alderman.
I just wanted to follow up on Alderman Conley's comments. Corporation Counsel, you sent me a draft too. That is, that's what we wanted on the satellite thing. Okay, thank you. That's all I needed. Thanks.
Anyone else on unfinished business? If not, we'll move on to new business. Any new business? No new business?
Mayor.
Mayor.
Mayor, okay.
Thank you.
Just a couple announcements. One is we're having a legislative reception over at IMB tomorrow from 5 to 7. That's to welcome back the legislators. I think the governor's address is tomorrow at noon. Is that correct? And then also on Monday is the Sports Hall of Fame banquet and it's a new location at the Bank of Springfield Center. And for sponsors, they have a meet and greet reception from 5 to 6:45 and then the induction ceremony is at 7 o'clock. And then the SSGA, I believe with the others, the Community Foundation, they also gave a history reborn. That was the, telling the story about the old state Capitol renovation. I'm not sure if anybody attended that, but they're going to show it on NPR Thursday, February 16th at 7 o'clock and then Sunday, February 19th at 11 a.m. on WSCC PBS station for President's Day.
So tomorrow is 5 to 7?
Correct.
Anything else, Mayor?
Nope.
That's it? Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Clerk, we got people signed up?
We do. Is Lindsey Carpenter here? Charles Peters? Isaac Jones?
Copies of this to go out to who that began with.
Thank you.
I'll wait till everyone get, get a copy of it.
Thank you very much.
He didn't get one. He could just, I believe he could share. Not the second one, not, not the ordinance. Would you need one more?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir, whenever you ready.
Appreciate it. This is on the behalf of Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the United States Constitution. I believe the protections of private and public protections of persons of such nationality and ethnicity. This is a descriptive form of defamation of character to curb the violence and the behavior of [BLEEP] and [BLEEP]. This is what is caused to use to stimulate. All I'm asking you all to do is to become conscious and become aware to curb the word, to terminate the word as a proclamation, as it can be done. These words, wait, excuse me, excuse me, wait, wait a second. This is, I was in the, I was here in a business establishment, right? Wait a second, wait a second. It's not about what you, wait a second, bro. This is, this, we talking about non-discrimination though. All I'm saying, I'm not using the word, I'm saying to eliminate the word.
By saying the word. By saying it.
By saying the word. Because it was used towards me. It was used in an area that I was in a business on the north side and a guy was playing pool and the guy felt like the other guy didn't feel like he was playing right, so he called it, he said it was [BLEEP] pool. And I asked him, what was it? What, what do you mean?
Okay, so.
And I finished reading.
Well, can, if you could say without the words, we know the words you're using, just get to the, yeah.
Another word was.
Come on, Peter.
Okay, oh my God. That's not the, this is the second word.
So curse words in public forums is the problem. People are listening on the TV and radio or wherever else and it's just not proper is why, why you're catching the pushback. So if we can try to, we got it here in writing.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, we got it in writing.
I understand what you're saying at four or three. Are we asking for it to be curbed in our society as well in the world of entertainment in this society, beginning here? Being that this where, this where the beginning of the Emancipation Proclamation was said at. We are people that choose not to be called or be used, used, or these words to be used against us. So we asking you to terminate and abolish the words in all forms. It is a word, it is a words, these are words that are used to stimulate violence, terrorism in our society. It is, it is distinctively taken on the character traits of son, daughter, mother, father, grandparents, wives. These words are used towards people to create an aggressive atmosphere, to create a terrorism. And we know this, this is true. I mean, I don't have to sit up here and bring you a whole lot of data for the knowledge that we understand. All I'm asking you to do, there is laws, there's, there's laws and there's stipulations here, just like there is for the LBGQ community. You know, you can't call them names. We don't want to be called names and this is who we are. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3. Identification, description, foregoing, foreword, noun. These are the words that we're using. This is not about wealth. This is about generational education, generational protection. And we asking you all to move forward on making a proclamation this month. Why not? These are the words that causes terrorism in our community. Each and every time it is used, it is an outbreak of violence. And it's a history of it. It has no identification. It has no identification, no woman comes from a dog. I come from not a dog. My mother don't come from a dog, we don't come from dogs. Our women don't come from dogs. Our babies don't, our daughters do not come from dogs. Our men are not that. That is a name, that is a description that is unknown. No one knows, it is a name that is caused to create terrorism in our communities. And we asking you all to step forward and to help save lives under the act of public safety. Non-discrimination. We have a right to be called, we are not heathens. We cannot go before the Most High as heathens by using these names. Our children are using these names, and little do you know, in District One eighty-six, you have light-skinned children against the dark-skinned children in our communities. That's something that you all don't know that is going on. There's a high level of discrimination that is being interpreted in our communities that's been stimulated. All I'm asking you all to do is curb it, stop it, terminate it, abolish it, over. It's a proclamation, that's all. Same way we do other things, it's just that time and it's that era. Any questions?
Real quick, Mayor, didn't, well.
I apologize about the word.
Maybe we need to, we did the anti-hate proclamation many, many, uh, well, I, I can't remember how far back.
After Charlottesville.
But I think that, I mean, we've, we've done that, we've done the, and, and I think we are the first ones to, the first round that did it, and I was glad we did it. I mean, that's just my thought, we, we've already, we, we've been way ahead of the curve on this.
Well, as an act of defamation of character and antisemitism, I asking you to make it a fine for persons that use it. How about that? In the places of employment, the places of business, in the places of our community, make it a fine, just like, it's like throwing a cigarette out the window, it's fifty dollars.
So, so, so what I would say to you is you, you've come before us, um, and you, you've got a request of us, and, uh, we were, we'll run it by our corporate counsel and, and find out what is it that we, we can and can't do, you know? Um, I happen to sit here, and as I'm thinking, there's just certain things we can't control and do, uh, the school board example, or the school kids thing, that's for the school board, you know? And so, the stuff that's for us, we'll, we'll, uh, take that in consideration, I'll follow the guidance of whatever the mayor and the corporate counsel decides if they want to renew the, uh, because I can remember under the Karen Isser administration, uh, uh, no racism, or don't hate in my city, that type of thing, you know? Uh, I, I don't know to give you an answer tonight, but I can thank you for coming and giving your request to us, and now we have it. We'll, we'll see, we'll do it. Earlier, all it was about was the appropriate of the words.
Right, right, and I understand, uh, F C C, the thing.
But, thank you.
Yes. Uh, one more thing, Mr. Mayor. There was a, there was an article that I had, uh, uh, filed, in which it was received by the city clerk, Frank Lesko's office, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and it was the same ordinance of life. It's the same contract, there was no response, and this contract here is attached to my daughter. And it's still, there's no response, and it's like, I don't understand why are we in an era of time where persons continue to discriminate against persons that continue to mandate to the reporters that something has happened, that a crime is being committed, or knowledge where statutes is being used, and I'm a person that's bringing forth the law, or bringing forth the issue, the complaint. There's been no responses, this is April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. I'm asking Frank Lesko on corporate counsel, what's the next step? Because this was regarding my daughter and, uh, Sheriff, uh, uh, Jack Campbell signing off on, uh, summons of my daughter to have my daughter removed from me, and I had an order of protection, I never seen the summons. And we all know, according to the Illinois compiled statute, the Supreme Court ruled that no summons that is not seen by a person is not a proper summons.[1762.64]